You all set? Don't everybody jump at once. Good evening. I want to welcome you all for attending the City of Calamasa City Council meeting, Monday, April 3rd. It is 6:00 PM. Called the meeting to order and do you want to do roll call, Marlene, please?
Councilmember Cervantes?
Here.
Councilmember Manley?
Here.
Councilmember Molina?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hewitt?
Here.
Mayor Davis?
I'm here. And let it be seen that we have City Manager Kobo, City Attorney Borough, City Clerk Gertis, Finance Director Reed, Planning Director Lucia, Public Works Director S-S-Sakari, City Engineer Thornton, Fire Chief O'Connell, and Sheriff Captain Salas. Jeff, you want to lead us in the flag salute, please?
Yes, sir. All stand. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a presentation tonight for somebody from the...
One legacy.
Huh?
One legacy.
One legacy? Is there anybody here? Oh, right.
This is a proclamation on the DNP doing a life. This is what I told him on the... It really helps a lot of people. You know, and people don't realize how many parts of your body can be used. So, you know, if you don't need it, maybe somebody gets back in there. And I want to thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Councilmembers. I've genuinely not been alive. I'm very glad.
So hello, my name is Kat. I am the mother of three. My 11-year-old son Christopher was autistic. He was in the sixth grade. He loved trains and Batman. Unlike many autistic children, he didn't shy away from affection. He was the first one to want a hug or to need to cuddle. Almost six years ago, he accidentally suffocated in our home. It is therapy swing. He was rushed to Kaiser and immediately sent to Loma Linda Children's Hospital. I don't know what we would have done without the care and the support of his healthcare team. Unfortunately, after exhaustive efforts, they were unable to save him. But because of the hard work of those healthcare workers, he was able to save five lives through organ donation. His kidney and pancreas went to one man. His liver went to another man. Both of his heart valves went to children under the age of fives. But Chris's other kidney went to this amazing little boy named Eddie. Eddie was born with dysplastic kidney disease. And at three months, he was put on a feeding tube. And at 10 months, he was put on dialysis. Eddie spent the first three and a half years of his life in and out of hospitals fighting for his life when his family finally got the call that there was a kidney for Eddie. My Chris's kidney. He was on dialysis 10 hours a day. That was almost six years ago. Today, Eddie is an energetic and active nine-year-old. He plays baseball and soccer and the violin, and he is in the third grade. And although my son will never again play outside or go to school, I now have the great joy and pleasure of watching this little man live his very best life because of my little man. Chris used to tell us he was a cyborg made up of different parts and pieces. And whenever he was sick or injured, he would tell us that he could just swap out his old pieces for new ones. As you can imagine, we never had a conversation with our 11-year-old son about what he would want us to do if he were to suddenly pass. But I take comfort in knowing that if he had had the choice, this is the one that he would have made. His cyborg dreams are now a reality. There are still 105,000 people waiting for the gift of life. 22,000 of those live here in California. Anything that we can do to make people aware and informed about this life-giving choice needs to happen. Chris is gone, but he lives on in others. Chris is gone, but he is not forgotten. And because of the gift of organ and tissue donation, he's not only remembered by us, his family and friends, but also by the family and the friends of the lives that he helped save. And for that, I will forever be grateful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Communications from the public. You have three minutes to state, you know, anything you really care to, as long as it isn't too vulgar. And give your opinion on things, and we do appreciate it, and we are listening. Mr. Wright?
James Wright, Rancho Calamasa Senior Advocate, Specially Sensitive Receptors. In my response to the Notice of Preparation Draft Environmental Impact Report for the Oak Valley North Warehouse Project and the significant negative health impacts and foreseeable risks and dangers associated with the future warehouse day and night operations, my focus is on our residents, their health, and personal safety. I gave detailed descriptions under the following issue areas: air quality, diesel truck emissions, transportation, land use, planning, recreation, and public and wildfire safety. I also asked the city to reject Berkshire Development's proposed general plan use amendment and reject zone change and SPA Area 4 and the modification of the official zoning map, reject the development plan review and conditional use permits, and reject the tentative parcel map. In its place, I propose that the warehouses would be replaced by 34 acres of open space natural next to Rancho Calamasa and Planning Area 1, bordering Calamasa Boulevard and Beckwith Avenue. The remaining 74 acres for parks and community recreation, Planning Area 2 will border Calamasa Boulevard and Beckwith next to Sherrendale. I noted that I would need the help of the City of Calamasa for planning and to seek out and pursue all federal, state funding and program of park trail recreation resources in the city. There was no option for this alternative, which deprives due process in the process of the preparation notice and the forthcoming environmental impact report. My community absolutely wants property to be green and a place for their families and pets. And it would mean that our side of the 10 would be natural and open, the reason why they moved to the City of Calamasa, to raise their families or retire and enjoy the scenic views, plant, and wildlife, and breathe unpolluted air, in peace and quiet. And the city needs to hear them and allow this through sensitive land use planning. They have a right to pursue their investments in their property and health future. Also, if the mayor and city council would acknowledge them and what they want, it could repair the damage of mistrust that currently exists in our city. I'm also a donor. I think it's a noble cause. And I would urge others to be donors. It's a noble cause. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. John Gates?
Good evening. I'm John Gates. I am at Sherrendale, Mesa, Calamasa. Good evening, Mayor and fellow councilmen and officials, avocado growers. Whoa, hello. Anyway. Eight years ago, myself and others, some here tonight, were successful in negotiating a 250,000-square-foot cap on warehouses. Mayor Davis, you and the city council approved this cap. Today and over two years later, a new city council with you, Mayor Davis, overturned the 250,000-square-foot cap and created an open door for developers, shop-off, Ohannahan, and Berkshire, to take advantage of this change. They have quickly seized this opportunity by filling their pockets, while Calamasons see only open spaces dwindling. Calamasa was planned as a bedroom community, not a warehouse farm. New residents coming to what they thought was Calamasa is instead a warehouse landscape surrounded by thousands of new residential developments. Mayor Davis, at the last council meeting, you made the comment that property owners have rights to develop their property. I could not agree with you more, sir. However, you were at that time defending developers. I was there that evening. Why not support the majority, I repeat, the majority of the property owners of Calamasa, the residents, and the constituents? And this is called a responsible government. In the coming months, the city council will vote on the proposed Oak Valley North Berkshire Development, adding three more warehouses totaling 1.8 million square feet. I trust this council will deny this development on behalf of the citizens of Calamasa, the majority property owners, and not influenced by developers or other influences. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Marlene Davis?
I came with more handouts. I think you'll find one that's really interesting I'd like to share with you. Sharon Dale's history, that's the mobile home park that I live in. And can I give them to you? Thank you. I've also some articles about an assemblywoman in Sacramento that's trying to introduce a bill for the second time to keep warehouses at least 1,000 feet away from another building, especially residents and schools and hospitals, that kind of thing. Unfortunately, we do need warehouses. And I think we need to compromise. Let's share them with some of the other cities like Beaumont and Banning. What I'm concerned about is I think that the elderly, which I am one of, and the seniors are possibly not being thought about, especially with the property that I'm concerned about on Calamasa that we used to refer to as the Sterns' property. I think you probably remember that. Anyway, in 2015, we did stop the warehouse. And now we're back to square one. I don't know who the developer is, but I think that you've forgotten that that property, if a warehouse goes in, it'll be sandwiched right in between Rancho Calamasa Senior Mobile Home Park and Sherrendale Senior Mobile Home Park, along with a daycare center. Now, I know the city council had nothing to do, because there wasn't one at the time, with the senior mobile home parks. That would have been the Riverside County Supervisors, probably. But you did have something to do with the daycare centers. So, and they don't want to move. They've got very good property there. But those children will be susceptible to anything that those trucks bring in. Not to mention, we have 80- and 90-year-old people in our communities that are still driving. They're going to have to navigate between those trucks. And there's going to be hundreds of them. We're already... The 10 freeway has been already expanded once. It's going to have to be done again because, you know, it's constantly congested. How can you allow all these warehouses to go in? Now, these developers have rights. And they've invested a lot of money in land in Calamasa. And they've waited a long time to realize a profit on what they've invested in. But we have to compromise. And we have to think of the elderly and the young. Thank you.
Thank you, Marlene. Ms. Delaney?
City Council, Danae Delaney. You've been given two documents, and I've also included copies of the Berkshire's brightly colored crown above our town from last week. First, shop-off Mesa Verde pre-application for his last mile logistics superpad if approved, six toxic source point warehouses, 4 million square feet of warehousing at a minimum, and estimated 2,700 diesel trucks per day on Sandalwood and 7th Street. I'll paraphrase paragraph four. The current schedule includes developing the residential superpads first and releasing those to home builders who will perform the improvements and sell the homes. The second step will be to perform all improvements and to develop the last mile logistics, the warehouses. This shows a strategic plan that buyers will beware if they see a superpad of warehouses when they consider buying a home in Mesa Verde. Second informational sheet is about Cunningham Davis Corp., side one. I found out that Mayor Davis runs a multimillion-dollar concrete business in the residential, commercial, and industrial industries. Kudos to you.
Correct that, please.
You can look.
I don't have...
He is listed as VP and in charge of strategies and plans in the organization. Side two, the Better Business Bureau list Bill Davis as the principal could be wrong. Bloomberg states that CDC is in the business of industrial services. Buzz File states that the NAICS, a federal system to gather data about the US economy, states that he is in the business of poured concrete foundation and a structured contractor industrial building construction. I will never say there is any wrongdoing unless I have proof. I will say that it appears that Mayor Davis is in the industry of residential, commercial, and industrial construction. So, if the mayor voted no on developer entitlements, could Cunningham Davis Corp. be blacklisted by developers in those industries? Also, I understand from the FPPC that no voting member can financially benefit one year before or after a vote on a specific project. There is no mention about a member being able to work on other projects for the developers in other cities and states. I believe Mayor Davis could also legally begin profiting... Legally begin profiting from his vote on our Oak Valley Town Center and the Berkshire's warehouses, starting on 9/7/2023. Our mayor may have impeccable personal ethics. And if his business is paid to build any entitlements he approves, that would go against the values of many Calamasa residents. Finally, I would say that we have some interesting topics coming up in the 2024 election. Let the 2024 town halls and candidate forums begin, because I can't wait to see the shop-off Berkshire show. And with that, I am done.
Thank you. Okay. Now we come up with the consent calendar. Okay, I'm sorry.
This is a public comment from Mr. Ron Roy, who is a Beaumont resident, to Calamasa City Council. Calamasa is the only city in the Pass area that does not allow public comments via telephone or virtual conferencing such as a Zoom. Beaumont allows for telephone public comment call-ins. Banning does one better. It allows public comments by both telephone and Zoom. Therefore, Calamasa City Council, please update your public participation at city council meetings to reflect 2023 communication technology and allow for public comments by both telephone and Zoom. Please do so by your next council meeting on April 17th. Thank you, Mr. Roy.
Thank you. Now, can I... Anybody want to pull anything on the consent calendar? Do I have to?
I move to approve the agenda. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, consent calendar. Does anybody have a question there? Did they get a motion then?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar items, 1 through 8.
I'll second. Go ahead, Wendy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we get to hear from our illustrious police chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. This report will be from March 20th to April 2nd. During that timeframe, we've handled 214 calls. 13 of those calls were traffic-related. We had six thefts. Five of those were misdemeanor, one felony. We had two burglaries, two vehicle thefts, two batteries, one domestic battery, and one drug arrest, one robbery, and one sex crime. Subject to your questions, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Fire chief?
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. Year-to-date, City of Calamasa fires responded to 437 incidents. 305 of those are medical aids. Seven fires. 24 auto aid responses to City of Ucaipa. We've received three responses into the city. The 24 responded, we've been counseled nine times. And we've had 89 miscellaneous calls for service. I'll talk a little bit about our Fire Prevention Bureau and our Community Risk Reduction Plan and a couple of things to do with that. We're well engaged in the second round of We Debatement inspections. Our folks are out contacting residents and businesses and are actively engaged with that in a manner that exceeds what we've done in years past. So, you know, with a bumper crop of rain this year, you guys, everybody can see what's going on, what's growing. We really need to be conscious of everything that turns green is going to turn brown, which moves me on to the next topic. I believe earlier in the week, the city manager and city clerk sent out some information regarding the 2022 fire hazard severity zones regarding the state responsibility area. And just to be clear on that, state responsibility area basically surrounds the perimeter of the city limits of the City of Calamasa. Everything within the foothills, out into the canyon, and everything that butts up north of us to the City of Ucaipa is all considered, or most of it considered, state responsibility area. Tomorrow, April 4th, marks the last day open for public comment on the new fire zone mapping. I believe that council has provided information that goes into detail. I received that information last week. I forwarded that. Cal Cities held a workshop last Monday. I have that information available. I urge not only council to have been provided the information, but the public to research this topic. Tomorrow, April 4th, is the last day of public comment for fire hazard severity zone mapping remarks. It's going to affect us. We have been contacted, received correspondence from the county fire chief through the fire chiefs organizations. There's been a lot of communication. This looks like we really need to pay attention to it going forward. So that's why I'm going to the nth degree to communicate this. I've got some handouts in the back that are available for the public. I urge folks to take a look at this topic. And pending your questions, that's the end of my report.
The weeds are already like three feet tall, so... We started on them, but they're still green. So can you guarantee they're not going to pop back up again?
They'll pop back up.
Unfortunately, and we go through it, and we work with all of our folks, all of our residents, you're going to trim them once, they're going to come back second time and a third time. We're not trying to overstep. We're just trying to communicate and educate folks so that when we get into the Santa Ana season in September, October, November, that we're not in trouble. So...
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and councilmembers reports. John?
Yes, I attended the March 22nd San Gregorio Pass Regional Water Alliance meeting. So that's going to consist of Calamasa, Beaumont, Banning, and all the water agencies that cover that area. So it's kind of a comprehensive, everything related to water discussion, try to keep all the government agencies involved. So some of the highlights, obviously, we've been receiving a lot of rain, so they consider this a wet year. So the snowpack's about 200% above average, which apparently means you can ski in July this year. So that's part of that. And they're using a lot of the systems statewide, trying to capture as much of this water as they can. But still, some of this water, there's some flooding, there's water, fresh water running to the ocean, so they can't capture it all, but they're capturing as much as they can. And the reservoirs are filling up, so that's positive. And also, because it's a wet year, there's some energy costs that are associated with getting water to us. So we're kind of at the bottom of this system from north to south. And there's energy costs associated with pumping water all the way to us. So in years where we have a lot of water, such as this, those costs are significantly lower for pumping it, getting it to us. So the promise is, but potentially, we could be some cost savings associated with the lower energy costs for just being a wetter season. And I think it's all F, with my report.
Thank you. Linda?
Yes, I attended the March 23rd RTA Executive Committee and Board Meeting. Where routine items were discussed. The March 27th Riverside County Transportation Committee Budget Implementation Committee that I attend was canceled. That's all I have.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yes, sir. I attended the Regional Conservation Authority, aka RCA, just today. So a few updates for you. We had a legislative update. So on the state side, the budget's not looking so good across the board, especially when it comes to conservation efforts. The governor's proposing a very steep cut to conservation in the state, which would... RCA is going to be doing their best to get their allotment or get some of that funds that is available. But there are going to be some substantial cuts. On the Fed side, the RCA is looking to lobby to streamline the acquisition... Streamline the process for acquisition of habitats for conservation and so make it easier for conservation groups to acquire lands. With respect to the executive director's update, just said there's going to be very little funds available for conservation in the foreseeable future. And on the positive side, though, that the positive is that the poppy season should be extended due to all the water we've had, by four to six weeks. So there's that. Not a lot of money, but at least we got poppies.
Yes.
That concludes my report.
Me?
You, go ahead.
Okay, I am now on the Budget Committee for WRCOG. I attended the Budget Ad Hoc Committee meeting on March 29th. And they went over all their programs that they have and how much money goes into each program. They have a few, though, that they're going to be dissolving possibly, like possibly the fellowship program. The HERO program was funding that. So they, we might have to get rid of that one unless they can... unless they can find some other funding for it. The HERO program had some, about 1,600 payoffs, so they, which is good. The IRN, they talked about the IRN budget as kind of fluctuating it, but they gave out a six-year budget period. Their partnership, they have a partnership with SoCal Gas right now. They talked about it's a new program. Let's see here. And then I had a WRCOG meeting today, as a matter of fact. And we approved the WRCOG strategic plan. And then they spoke about the awards they're going to give out at their general assembly in June. Mr. Ted Hoffman, who I believe was on the city council in Norco, that passed away about a month ago. They're going to give him a life, give his wife the Lifetime Achievement Award. I guess he was very well-loved and did a lot of things for his community.
Oh, boy.
They went over the Beaumont settlement. And like I, and they actually, we actually talked about membership dues possibly going up for all the cities. And the WSCE program is officially dissolved. So that's all I have.
All right.
Any questions?
Any question? I see Jeff over there winding up.
No, no, no.
Okay.
There's a lot of questions.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, if you tell me, I'll ask them.
Yeah. Okay, we'll move on to business items. Number nine, city commission. I think I'm going to give that to John to get started here.
Do we need to prepare that?
Oh, we have to, an ordinance or whatever it's called.
You have a resolution.
Resolution.
Okay.
So I'm going to appoint Scott Stamper to the Parks, Trails, and Community Service Commission. So go ahead and make a motion. Do we need to do anything else first?
Yeah, you have the ordinance you have to.
Okay. So I'm going to make a, okay, I'm going to make a motion to appoint Scott Stamper to the Parks, Trails, and Community Service Commission and adopt resolution number 2023-15.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is this Scott?
Yes.
Is he here?
He's here.
Come up here.
Number one, thank you for volunteering. It's a fruitless job. Want to raise your right hand? I give your name, do solemnly swear or affirm?
I, Scott Stamper, do solemnly swear and affirm.
Or affirm. That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and alliance
That I will bear true faith and alliance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservations.
That I take this...
I take this obligation freely.
This obligation freely.
Without any mental reservations.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or a purpose of evasion.
And that I will, that I will well and faithfully
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties that I...
We're done. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you want to go around and...
Thank you for allowing to.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Council members' comments and reports. These guys get to give you anything else you want to talk about.
I'll go first. On March 29, 30, 31, I attended the Planning Commissioner Academy. So this was kind of a comprehensive land use, discuss state and local relationships. So some of the, I think, highlights, as you mentioned, the state budget. So there's going to be some deficits. And so how that's going to impact planning and housing is pretty interesting. So some of the reasons for the deficit is kind of loss of income, income tax. So most of the state revenue is coming from income, from tax. And most of that is being paid by top earners. And recently, California's kind of suffered a population loss. And so that's kind of falling onto housing in a variety of ways. So they're trying to bring down the, basically, the cost of living on some of this population loss. And so they're trying to kind of impose some of the, some housing legislation that we've already seen. So something that we're going to have to keep an eye on and some of the legislation that's coming is going to kind of undercut local authority. And so a lot of stuff's going to be discussed in the future in Sacramento. So that's going to kind of tie the hands of local government and how we, how land use is decided, what the local government can say and do as far as what the community input is going to be on that. And so that's going to be a continued conversation that's going to take place. So something for the community to kind of keep an eye on as we kind of deal with this housing crisis and how it's going to be dealt with in Sacramento. So I think that's all. That'll conclude my report.
Linda, you have any comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to say with all the rain, our roads are really horrible. But I noticed that on county line with all the improvements that have been done with the roundabouts, that the flooding has minimized. So that's great news for the people that have that usual flooding. Also, coming up in the very near future, we're going to be discussing the return of the free lunch program at Fourth Street Park for kids. They get to have free lunch during the summer and some activities at Fourth Street Park. So I'm looking forward to getting that going. So we'll have more details later. Thank you.
Jeff.
Got nothing further to add, Mayor.
Okay. Wendy.
Yes. What was that, on Friday, we attended?
Yep.
The Morongo, what was it called, ambulance?
Emergency services.
Yeah. So Morongo Tribe over there, they got a new paramedic truck and helicopter, which is pretty cool. But what's interesting is what's really neat is the helicopter's going to service 150 miles in our area. So we benefit from that, which is really nice. So they, I'm happy that they purchased it, but we get to benefit from it, so. Also, I wanted to remind everybody, they spoke about this at WRCOG today, the 100th anniversary for the Ramona Pageant Play. If you haven't seen it, I haven't seen it. I'm going to go this year. But I hear it's quite something to see. And they said it's the last two weekends in April and the first one in May. And I think that's it.
Okay. Let's see. I guess I really don't have anything to say other than thank you very much for coming tonight. Thank you. Go ahead, Will. I'm sorry. I always forget the city manager.
No big deal, no big deal. Just a couple of things. I wanted to thank the council for approving. I have number seven, that's the new audit contract. There's been a lot of talk about land use around here. But one of the other important things that we do is we're stewards of the public's money. And one of the most important functions of that is our audit. And so we are in the practice of rotating auditors every five to six years. The state requires that we do it every six years. And so we've selected a new firm